An email came out. I told them to do something with this. Rebecca Farquhar. It'll be back, but she's not bringing it in. And then... Before we change the side. Uh... It's a show. When I look at it. It's like, wow, I guess there. So we don't have a test. My head's completely. It's very common for test on the course to make sure anything was also done. And when I was shot down, I put it out and they created stuff. This is my son. He will take like a turn on. He should be future. There's some good. But I can't. Some of them are right. The town that's a part of. Yes. I just love that. She's around. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not for calling. There's a joint for something they go to. Yes. Oh, yes. So it's all over here.
Hello. How are you doing? Um... Why are you the chairman of the community? So just press this. Making our properties. The cash. That's what it's about. So please.
Okay. I'm scared. It's a doctor. I remember your last. It's your cell. She was there. She showed. This week they're having four hundred days. Yeah. Something new.
Jump over.
Very comfortable.
It's changed. I think you might be. Um, you're all. For me, yeah. You're. What's new? It's kind of. Are you?
I'm going to go to the book. Once.
Yeah.
So. Everyone thinks like a genius. Yeah. You've got our meditation. Pointing. Yes. This is the meditation. I'm in the spirit. Building interaction. Question. You want your question? Yeah. I guess like that. Yeah.
So. Hello.
So what? Really did. Well, it is six o'clock, so I would call you the board. Uh, first thing, order business on the agenda is the board calls. You can call them, please.
Mr. Bacon?
Here.
Mr. Kirkett? Mr. Mahalston?
Here.
Ms. Clevinger? Mr. Zollinger?
Here. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, three of the five board members are present. That means we have more. One thing I would like to point out, when it comes to our voting, in order for anything to pass a variance or any action we take tonight, all three of us need to vote yes, even though there's, it's not a majority, because it takes two of us, it takes all three, because it takes three out of five board members for us to, you know, pass anything. So I want to make that clear tonight to anyone who's going to, you know, bring forth an application for a variance, you need to get unanimity among the three of us, because two of us are not present. Now, with that, then, the first, next order of business is approval of the minutes. I would like to retain a motion to approve the minutes from the June twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Motion approved. Second. It's a motion in the second. Any discussion? No discussion. Not the whole board.
Mr. Bacon? Mr. Mahalston?
Yes.
Mr. Zollinger?
Yes. Minutes are approved. Now, I'll move to the business portion of the agenda. We have a court board transcribing the proceedings, so what I'm going to do is have a court board put anyone under oath who may, may, even if he may speak, I'm not sure, go ahead and stand up, raise your right hand.
Do you sound as if the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Good day, thank you.
All right, thank you. We can be seated in. Just so you know, the court board's going to take down everything you say. Just make sure you speak clearly into the microphone. If we ask questions, just make sure you get the questions off, they'll say yes, no, I don't know, avoid shaking of the head, nodding, uh-huh, uh-huh, those types of things we normally do when we talk to each other, normal conversation, just makes for a job easier. With that also, I will tell you also, I tend to ask a lot of questions. I'm not trying to scare you or be antagonistic. I'm just trying to get information. I'm trying to make sure I make the best decision possible. That's why I'm doing it. Just be aware of that. I am an attorney and kind of goes with the territory, I guess, but I'm not trying to, you know, to be mean, I'm just trying to get information, that's it. So with that, then, we'll call the first order of business. Why don't we start with my notes?
Application number ZBOA two thousand eighteen point one eight one nine, South Valley Boulevard, northwest, applicant Gail Miranda. Richard Fisher, on behalf of Gail Miranda, has requested a variance to add a ramp to the front porch for handicap access to the home pursuant to section one one three three point oh eight A one B M C.
Okay, sir, I'm just going to state your name for the record.
My name is Richard Fisher.
Okay, and go ahead.
I am representing Ms. Gail Miranda, who's the owner of this property, and Ms. Sharon Fowler, who is the long time tenant of this property, and the property is eight nineteen South Valley Boulevard. We were seeking a variance in regard to a handicap access ramp, so that the tenant could get access back into the home. She was involved in a traffic accident on December first of twenty seventeen on Pittsburgh Road, and the consequence of that, her right leg was removed.
Okay.
So she has been in rehab since and is seeking to get back into the home. We are asking to withdraw our request for a handicap ramp variance, and we will negotiate a satisfactory resolution with the building department.
Okay, thank you, sir. I don't think we need to take any action. If you want to withdraw, that's your decision, and you'll have the opportunity to resubmit if you need to, or we can hopefully get something that's in compliance, you know, you need to come back here. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And the applications withdrawn. The next item we will move to is I O A on the agenda, the business portion of the agenda. Yeah, go ahead.
Application number ZBOA two thousand eighteen dash eighteen, Shiloh Run Southeast and Alexandria Parkway Southeast. Advocate AMC Land Company has requested a variance to construct two permanent dead end streets longer than six hundred feet on the following streets. Shiloh Run Southeast, one thousand seven hundred eighty feet in length from the intersection of Shiloh Run Southeast and Halifax Way Southeast to the proposed cul-de-sac of Shiloh Run Southeast, and to Alexandria Parkway Southeast, one thousand six hundred twenty-five feet in length from the intersection of Alexandria Parkway Southeast and Halifax Way Southeast to the proposed cul-de-sac of Alexandria Parkway Southeast.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the applicant would like to have this heard when there are more than three numbers present on the board, if possible. So the applicant is asking that this matter be rescheduled to our September meeting. I personally find the request to be well taken, and I therefore made a motion to table the consideration of this application to the September meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll send it.
Any discussion?
No.
No discussion at all.
Mr. Bacon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalston?
Yes.
Mr. Zollinger?
Yes. So that matter is tabled. We'll move on to having a be in the business portion of the agenda.
ZBOA two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, six twenty-five Edgewood Street Southeast, applicant Dale Alicia Freeman. They are requesting a variance to construct an accessory parking pad next to existing driveway pursuant to section eleven thirty-three point oh A C three.
Okay. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application can step forward. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead and start by stating your name.
Dan Freeman.
Okay, sir, I've, we have received your application and drawings before, in advance of the meeting. I have withdrawn, but I'm also driven by your property to take a look at the lot. So go ahead and just give us why you would like the application to be approved.
Well, my daughter's going to college. She had.
I'm sorry. Hang on, over again.
I'm sorry. My daughter is going to college. I, she's going to home college, and it's, she has to get, so we have to buy her vehicle, but we, my, both my wife and I, because the driveway is so short, you know, and we don't need vehicles out of garage. She's got to drive to her convenience place to park her car, but she came along a street. All right, so we were going to redo our driveway and sidewalks in our house anyway, so we decided, let's put this parking pad right next to the existing driveway, so she can pull off and be out of the way of the garage, so that me, either my wife or myself could easily get out without not having her, you know, and her schedule can be very different. So that's what we were going to do, and when I submitted the application, I was told that it was rejected primarily because I live on a corner, therefore I have two fronts that don't have a side, thus I need a twenty-foot setback in order to put accessory parking. Twenty feet would put me right up to my existing sidewalk that's up against my house already.
Sorry, we're doing twenty by ten feet.
No, it's only twenty. Okay? But even ten feet would not be enough for us to construct this, so that's why it's.
Setback, ten.
Ten. Ten feet from the public right away.
Yes, and that would give a sidewalk edge, right?
Right.
So you need to be, the rule is you need to be ten feet from sidewalk.
Okay, so that would give me basically three feet to put a parking pad, and I'm going to wrap four so that I don't, so.
Yep.
You know, that's why, and I measured the vehicle as far as the parking area, and a thirteen by twelve is basically what, which I need in order to use it.
It looks like, I'm trying to, I'm looking at your drawings, basically you're looking at making a concrete from your sidewalk to the public sidewalk. I mean, that's how a lot of talk.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's basically it, yes.
Okay. Sir, and there's no other location you can put this?
No, because on the other side, okay, which, on the driveway there, okay, it kind of, there's a slight incline, all right, so that would be very good for pulling parts for some water time. Trying to remember, little girl.
I'm trying to look. I looked around your neighborhood, and I, and sometimes when I look at these, you know, there are, people will come in and will say, well, their driveway is like mine that I want to do, and sometimes that's political, sometimes it isn't, and it's old, for this ordinance, they'll say, well, that doesn't matter, it's, you know, and it was built for the ordinance that we have, just put in place. But I couldn't find a design that matched exactly, or it looked kind of what you were trying to, trying to put here. Is there, do you know many other houses in your neighborhood that were, where they recently made this improvement, any other properties?
Um, yes, the corner of Maple, East Maple and Edgewood on the, let's see, on the southeast, southeast side, there's been an addition onto the driveway. On the corner of Woodside and Edgewood, just right down the street, okay, from east, there's also been addition from both sides of the driveway. And part of the problem with my, with my house is number one, driveway is very short, and number two, my garage is a two-car garage, I need a two-car garage, we, there are vehicles in there, and that's it.
Would you, well, it would look like, could you park a car on your existing driveway, go fit there, and be, you know, out of the way of the public sidewalk? You would, right, so.
By about a foot, yeah, so it holds all the way up. Problem is, like I said, she's going to, our schedule is such that it's going to be a hassle for us to have a constant movement.
Yeah, you just have to get out, you know, you were around.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, she is, because she's short, and I can't get her there.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah.
Is your house front on Edgewood or corner?
The front's on it.
Headward. So it has to be a side yard.
That's the way I, I see it, but Mr. Steiger said that because I live on a corner, I have two fronts, I don't, that, that, that my property, that butt's on Clarmont, it's, it's not a side, it's on the front, so that's why.
The setback, I mean, whether or not this is, it's ten feet, no matter whether it's front side, rear, or corner.
Correct.
It doesn't. It's ten feet, no matter what, what gets side or front.
Just like that.
Yeah, eleven thirty-three oh eight, page eighty, you have a.
Lead?
Yeah, F D there.
Front and left.
Yeah, front side, rear.
Side, two foot.
Oh, I see. I see where you're.
Rear, two foot.
Yeah.
If you can live with ten feet, you can have two feet actually on the sidewalk. It's okay.
Yeah, that'd, he'd still be in violation of what he's proposed, because he's going right up against the sidewalk.
That's what, if he goes twelve feet.
If he goes twelve, if he goes ten feet.
If he goes ten feet, it's okay.
If this was a, a side or rear of the lot, this is, you're saying this is up front?
On corners of a house has two fronts.
Just one?
A ho, on, on a corner lot, a house has two fronts, you have the address side, and their side of the house, on the other side, is actually considered a front yard, because all the other houses are facing our address on that street. So it's considered a side yard, but treated as a front yard to our zoning code in their, in, I believe it's eleven twenty-five, with the descriptions of, the outline of the setbacks and yard regulations, you have pictures.
But someone here, you know, basically, it is.
Now, if the house is weren't addressed on a, on a secondary street, and they were side, their side yard instead of secondary street, then it would be considered a side yard and treated as a side yard.
So most of it is a secondary street, or a corner?
Right, but there, yeah, but all the houses are addressed to that, and that makes it a side yard, but treated as a front yard with the setbacks.
Who's addressing it? Who's addressing it?
He's addressed on Elmo.
Edgewood, right.
Edgewood, yes, but that's his front yard, but because the other houses on Clarmont are facing and addressed to that, his side of the house is considered a front yard for his only, and treated with the setbacks that way.
Or, do you have a concern? I had noticed as, as you said, that you're going to have the, the driveway is actually going to a butt, the sidewalk, and you're, you're about a block from the elementary school?
Yeah.
And so.
So it's on the side street.
I would think you might have concern with the children that are going to be passing with, not really a safety concern, more of that car is probably going to be within, certainly within arms' reach of right beside the public sidewalk, so you're going to have children back and forth right beside your, your car right there.
Well, you know, it's funny, um, not funny, really, it's, it's, I've noticed that, they don't want, the young ones, they have to down at that one, and they're usually on the other side of the street, because the school's on the other side of the street, and I've watched them drop off or go down the walk, the kids to the school for fourteen years, and they're always on the other side of the street, so they, the kids have been in a problem on our side of the street, so. I know, and that is, that could be a concern, but that's a concern with any part of a driveway.
Well, I think if you're parked on your driveway, is the driveway still going to be pretty, yeah, close for, or?
Yeah, so the driveway is still, because it's such a short driveway, and that's kind of stuff that.
If, but I think it's going to be there, in your regular driveway, it's the rear of the car versus the way.
Versus, yeah, yeah.
It's maybe the side of the car.
Yeah, that's why I would like to do is hole in and just hole, and basically be parallel to the house. So.
Hypothetically, if this was the side, we didn't treat this as the front, if he built this thing ten feet wide, would he be in compliance?
Well, side yard, two feet away from the side yard, a lot, yeah, the side yard.
Yeah, so if it was.
Yeah, if he came to the front, then yeah, he'd be ten feet from the right of it, so.
I'm sorry, like, let's say, let's say hypothetically, I want to make sure I understand this, Clarmont was the side yard, we treated it as a side yard. If he was, if he built this so that it was the concrete ended two feet from the public sidewalk edge, would he be in compliance with that two-foot setback?
Yes, if that was true side yard, yes.
If it was, yeah, I know it's not.
Right, yes, if it wasn't a side yard, it'd be two feet.
Correct. Is ten feet too, too, not viable for you? It's actually the standard for parking spots. Yeah. In the city, they're ten foot wide, twenty foot.
He's got a twelve feet.
Okay. I basically was thinking of looking at it for one, give her enough space, and we give her. She just started driving this year, okay? All right, so.
Well, you got a sidewalk, and you got your own sidewalk, you got.
Yeah.
And you have some, some room there in case she over drives and gets.
Yeah, I do have a sidewalk, that is correct, but I was thinking of that and trying to keep her off of our sidewalk, because it was off the public sidewalk, but also, because that would be a two-foot strip, strip of grass maintenance-wise, that's not the best.
Just imagine. A little strip, sure.
Yeah, I mean, a little two-foot strip. I want, now, for you to finish, so.
I'm just thinking out loud here, and it's just, these are just my thoughts, and I haven't made a decision yet, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way where maybe we, maybe if we just said, okay, we'll treat this specific situation like it is a side yard, given how close your house is, and give you, just make it sort of, it would imply it was a side, side yard. I know that it would give a strip of grass, but it might give you just sort of like a little puffer there from the sidewalk. And, you know, just trying to figure out a way where maybe we can, we can work, work with you on this. And those are my thoughts right now. Questions?
I think you could use ten feet, ten twelve feet. He could do it. If you're not.
Well, that's why I asked him, I don't know if that was feasible, he's a little concerned about his daughter being able to fit.
Yeah. Wait, she already, she already last month hit car, parked car, getting in the parking spot, it's Starbucks.
Yeah, I'm going to be in St. Louis in about a year, so I just. So, but I, you know, I think, you know, I'm trying to, and this, it's just me talking, I'm just trying to figure out a way to give you something, and maybe just, and where it's facing some kind of reason here, and like, okay, I can understand why this, this, I understand the word it says it's just two fronts, but it's treat this as a side, give you, you know, give you, give you the ten feet, which would put you in compliance if it was a side yard. I don't think I have any thoughts on that.
So essentially, I'm asking you for an additional two feet?
No, 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 you're asking for, you're asking for twelve.
Well, pardon.
Really, what we should, you know, if you want to say in compliance, we'd tell you no to anything, but I'm trying to figure out a way where we can kind of work out.
Yeah, thirteen by ten.
Yeah, thirteen by ten, thirteen by twelve. Under the standard that you have, there's ten criteria that you actually have to demonstrate, that you meet this criteria, and so by the board offering the treaty, the what is to be considered the front, the two fronts, one is as the side, make it an eight instead of a ten, I, I think, to be honest, that it is generous to, for the ten, I don't think that if it was challenged, that it would stand out to the script, that is, this actually, because one of the criteria is this, the minimum necessary to make it possible for reasonable use, and I think that, I remember that. Putting it at ten, which is our standard for parking spots and parking throughout the city, putting it at that standard wouldn't be unreasonable, but at twelve, there may be, and someone could challenge their, their authority to grant that, that variance.
Ten feet's quite, quite a get, I guess. That's what I have to, have to try to look at.
Yeah, I don't know if they're willing for that, you're looking all over the criteria, but I want to make sure that you were aware that they are.
Yeah, but I, I weren't reading any specifications when I made the application, and I guess I was thinking, because, because my daughter's previous parking experience, that she may be, that she could use an additional two feet to maneuver her vehicle, because.
I understand that, of course, that's not another criteria we can look at. I understand, totally understand.
I was looking at her, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Any other questions for this gentleman?
My, my concern is that you have a two-car wide driveway, I mean, in North Canton, that's a luxury for many in North Canton, many people have a single-car driveway, name driveway, because some people have shared driveways. I'm in that same boat, you have jogging cars at night and in the morning, and I also have a daughter that goes to Alton.
Oh, he's over there for a while, but.
In jogging cars, and we've got six up in the driveway at even one time, so. Where else is that? It seems to be giving you something that other property owners don't have, or enjoy, that you're asking for, that's not a passing judgment on any time, as far as the approving or granting of the variance, or just an observation. But I do think that the compromise offered is reasonable. In many cities, ten by twenty is a, many cities, it's being reduced from ten by kind of this crush or something, maybe. So your question, twelve by thirteen, is even in excess of ten by?
It must have been a little fourteen by ten.
Well, let's, you got to turn and see if anybody else wants to speak, and if you don't have anything. And if you don't have anything else right now, you really have another chance to talk if you want to. Let's see if anybody else wants to add anything to say.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Oh, so.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna hear from other people if anybody wants to speak. So you go ahead and have a seat right now, and then we'll definitely, eventually we'll act on this. Does anybody else want to speak regarding the application?
I'm talking on 1307, pretty restricted southeast North Camp, Ohio. I sympathize with the gentleman. I'm sure there are almost every resident in North Camp sympathizes with this gentleman. I had a look at the zoning map, and I'm presuming that's probably R-50 zoning. I've been preaching for years, we need to actively get rid of R-50 zoning and eliminate some of this housing, combine lots in various areas. I have the same problem as many other residents in North Camp. If you have a single-car parking lot, parking, and you have more than one car, you're going to be shuffling cars out of the street, or backing out, letting others get out, employing Batman. When I did some renovations on my home years ago, I arranged for parking in the rear of the house. That rectified my situation. I still utilize my neighbor's back patio area when I back out and pull out into the street. It is a big problem. And I'd like to see the city do something actively to eliminate R-50. Because these houses, as they become more and more unattractive, they're going to decline with lower quality people, and we're going to find ourselves with big problems. Currently, this is our code, I thought it said, we point by Mr. Fox, that, and I only scan this once, but if you've got a car right there on the sidewalk, I'm thinking security guards, somebody could actually spam on the public property on the sidewalk and do damage to your car, and you wouldn't hardly know it, because it's right out there on the public right over there. So I know it's a hard decision for you. I'd like to see us maintain our parking accommodations. If you don't, you're going to be inundated by these kinds of requests. And we're going to start looking like down, down Camp, with just oodles of cars covering the lots, surrounding the homes. I sympathize with you. But after you go out and move your cars, so your cars can come and go, or you defend the neighborhood. Yeah, it's a bit inconvenient, I, I hate it the first few years I was in my residence. But does that qualify for giving a variance? And if it does, how many hundreds of other property owners are underqualified under the same reasoning? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak?
Can I just say something again?
Sure, come on, come on.
Because we were talking, I'm sorry. When Mr. Roswell was talking, the judge, someone reminded me of our situation. In that corner, all right, there's only one stop sign. And the stop sign is when this is viewed by a yard, it's coming from, you know, you're coming from the north to the south of Clermont. So people come up Edgewood off of West Side, or they come on down Edgewood off of Clermont, off of the jaw of Clermont, the south lane. And let's just say, they, they don't slow down as they probably should to make that, because it's a, it's a, to make that turn, it's more of a curve turn. And, I mean, I've watched for years in my home, my younger daughter, how the road, she was looking several times, went on a bicycle. Boy, now, because people just shouldn't walk, and I've had to grab her, grab her by the bicycle and get her on the, on the road. And with her, I'm in this situation now, as it applies, with her and my older daughter having to back a car out constantly, she's putting herself at risk around the drivers coming around those corners and getting hit. And I mean, and that's always been a concern of mine. In fact, I, you know, I talked with, when we moved in before, you know, 15 years ago, 14, something, 12 years ago, some of the original owners still live in the neighborhood. And we talked about that, and he said, well, nothing's happened so far, but yeah, it is a problem, you know, and they, we do have to watch, we'll be very careful. Watch from both sides, people coming around. In fact, tonight, we're backing out, especially with the football practice that goes on at Clermont. And you have cars park all the way down, you know, on the side of Clermont. You, it's hard to see, as you're backing out, people approaching from the north.
So the stop signs are two-way stop, where people are driving up Clermont, Clermont has a stop there, right? Edgewood is a straight through?
Edgewood is a straight through, right.
Okay.
Right, so the stop is, the only stop sign at that, at that, basically that three-way is coming from the north, going to the south, you know, onto, you know, to turn onto Edgewood, that side is the backyard. Okay, so that is, I mean, that is a problem. Just trying to back out when you have conditions, like I said tonight, where people park all along Clermont, it's hard to see, especially with the driver, I think, you back out to see, you're in the street.
Okay, anything else, sir?
No, I mean, that, but that is, you know, a serious accident concern, right?
Okay, I appreciate that. Are you getting, if there's nothing else, any more questions, questions or anything? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, looking at the factors that Mr. Fox mentioned, these factors that he mentions are in section 11, 79.10, seat one of the ordinance. There's several things we have to look at. These aren't things we have to go by, you don't have to meet all these criteria, but they're things we have to weigh and consider when determining variance. This is not an easy decision for us, or for me in general, because it's kind of a borderline situation. I am inclined to bring variance 10 feet by 13 feet, as, as I discussed. Because I think even though this is considered a front under the ordinance, if you drive by the property, if you look at the house, any, any common sense would tell you this is the side of the house. And it's unique because it's very close to the sidewalk. And so I'm inclined to bring variance where we would treat this, like, in this particular instance, because of the uniqueness of this property, like this is a sidewalk, and we bring a variance of 10 feet by 13. So there'd have to be a two-foot buffer between the parking pad and the public sidewalk. When I look at the factors, the special conditions and circumstances that exist here would be the closeness of the structure to the public sidewalk on Clermont. Whether the property will be able to reasonably return, whether it may be beneficial use of the property without the variance. I believe there can be beneficial use of the property without the variance, but this would bring a return, because it would increase parking. And in this day and age, I do think that can improve property value if it's done right. Whether this is substantial, the minimum necessary to make possible reasonable use of the land. I think by going with 10 feet instead of 12, we're going to the minimum, if we treat this as a side yard, as I discussed. Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would sustain some alter. As you have noted, there are other properties with a third parking space built in. Some of them, maybe they were built before the ordinance, maybe not. But I don't think this changes the character, because there are other driveways and properties with a third parking space that has been added after the fact. It first affected delivery of governmental services. There's been no evidence to suggest this would affect delivery of governmental services. There's been no information about this being purchased with knowledge of zoning restrictions. In fact, it sounds like this property was purchased before the mis- ordinance was put into effect. Safety is a concern with me, I noticed that too, I'm in that area well, Edgewood is a two-way. And I don't like the idea of having to back out of this parking spot, jockeying cars, when you're so close to a school, and with that, with that turn from Edgewood on, on to Clermont. So there is, there is a safety concern, not a borderline, but I think there's something, something there that grants it. So I'm, I, I would, I would make a motion to grant the variance for 10 feet by 13 feet. And we'll see if there is a second, a few, close enough to the two-foot, or that two-foot buffer. And then, oh, the two-foot buffer between the, between the parking pad and the public sidewalk.
Oh, sorry.
Is there any dis, any more discussions or thoughts regarding this application? If that number will call over.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalston?
Yes.
Mr. Joffre?
Yes. So sir, your variance is agreeing that as modified, so it would have to be 10 feet by 13 feet. Okay.
So what's my next step?
Do you have the top word?
Bring in, bring in new plans, showing the reflection of modified by variance, and then we'll approve it as such, and we should do permit.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, well, call the next item of business, the item C, the business portion, you know?
Application number ZGOA 2018-2020 East Maple Street at Kent Walsh University. They are requesting a variance to install a protective netting on a 20-foot, 25-foot tall pool in baseball outfield, per section 1155.06, on 3B and 3C.
Thank you, bye. Sir, what happened, you approaching the station name?
I think Brian Greenwell, representing Walsh University. So Walsh were asking for variance on the, to construct a baseball netting. As you can see, with the construction of lighting of Route 43, they came through and expanded that roadway, took it through, took down the pine trees that we had, and were actually creating the original variant that we have. The original trees are still existing from center field all the way to right field. We negotiated with them to replace trees, and that's what happens, they'll October through November timeframe. But right now, we're concerned for the safety of traffic, as once they open all four lanes, the safety of traffic going back and forth. So we have an additional 20 feet that we lost between the roadway and the sidewalk coming down to the fence. So if you divide, you can see that it's truly an open area routinely during baseball season. Home run balls going into those trees, apparently, you know, in the past, they would get through the trees for blow-up. But now there's nothing there to, to stop them. So we're asking for variance to put up a, a netting, at least 20, 25 feet at most. We're looking at the plan, what's going to be the construction of that, the true layout, so we could get variance. We don't come back to permitting anyways. Right now, with trees, putting the trees in place, you know, we've got probably a five to 10-year period before that becomes dense enough to stop the balls from getting into the roadway. So that's what we're going to add for variance, to put up some type of protective netting for the balls getting into the roadway.
So you'd never come down once the trees get fallen, is that the plan?
Uh, it would be, it could, it possibly could be, right now, we don't have plans on, you know, is it something that we could take down in the winter time? Right now, we're looking at, if variance comes through, we can look at, say, was the possibility of the netting systems that actually come down in the winter time? Is something that is a short-term or a 10-year project? Because generally, netting is a, what, a 10 to 15-year forward plan if we're placing that anyways. So we have that cost factor again, too. So we haven't decided if it would be just temporary for 10 years or is it a longer period? If the trees are dense enough, definitely could come down.
This would be kind of, this would be kind of netting, like, you said netting, and you were talking about fabric?
Yeah, baseball netting, more of a nylon, I don't know if they have it as little league fields, maybe one of the badges, you may have it. So it's probably the baseball netting, the dimension, or I think an inch and a half by inch and a half.
It's black, it's black?
Black, it's a mercury, well, yeah, it's black, so I think it's, what was the size of that netting?
Two and a half?
Might be two and a half, I'd say.
Baseball wouldn't that, right?
Right, baseball can't, and it would hit, it would hit the netting and drop down. So prevent it from getting through into Market Avenue. So the, like I said, the trees are going to be dense enough to stop that person today. You know, we're looking at the center field to the right field, that's not an issue, the length of that from the home run fast to Market Avenue is great enough, that's not an issue. So the diagram that I had shown you is, there's some distance on there, our left, home run fast on left field is 325. To the roadway is about approximately 380 feet possibly. We've got maybe 50 feet, that's changed a little bit since they put the sidewalk in play. And then we have, then there's some other distances there, too. So we have some concerns, too, as we start looking, you know, we want to extend far within just left field slightly outside where the old BKE property was, because we start running into the issue there. So that's why on the layout, we see that we're extending potentially 340 feet, we've got lots from center field all the way up to the retaining wall where BKE property was.
And the fence, we're just going the, the left field area.
Correct. Yeah, we start at, from center field all the way through to the left field, is where the new trees will be planted also. So as those grow, those will hide, based upon rendering that I created, the trees will hide majority of that fencing from Market Avenue, from those pitches that come in there, too.
Did you say, would you plan to take those down in the winter?
Well, we don't know yet, we're looking at what the possibility, they make two different types of that, actually have a crank type system that can come down. If we could do that, and we could afford it, that's the, that's the preference, so that it's not during winter time.
The moles stay with that?
The moles would stay, they would just have a crank with a, you know, a. The other winch, you know, bring them up and down if necessary.
Do you consider this a fence?
Do I consider it a fence?
Yeah.
Based upon the, your.
The definition of fence in our ordinance.
The, yeah, since it has to be constructed anything over three feet, that's kind of where it's placed, under what, in the bottom, or?
It's, I have a little bit of. It's 1125, 235, that's page 52 of mine, by your fences and structure, composed of wood, iron, steel, basery, stone, or material erected in such manner and such location as to enclose a secure person, enclose a secure privacy factor, any fine remains, or any part of the premises. I guess the poles are.
All will be of steel, probably, so. I mean, we are working investigation, can probably pull there, but if that case, we'd have to be someone to help, if that was the option.
The purpose is to save windshields for parks, right?
Windshields, damage to cars with all that traffic, potentially any kind of injuries due to accidents. You know, and now we start running into multiple lengths of traffic. We'll be running into an issue where we have a liability issue, because instead of just a damaged windshield, which we pay for some of those in our parking lot today, you know, if some windshield is damaged, usually we'll pick that up. But we have a liability issue if somebody actually gets in an accident, and we have a bodily injury on Market Avenue. So we're kind of wanting to prevent that.
There's also a fair amount of foot traffic.
Yes.
Comes down, we were running in water.
Right, and now with the sidewalks, there'll be a sidewalk, any people come across, they'll go to McDonald's and whatnot, so.
Got a question, John?
I was looking at the softball field at Christ Park, it's got a pretty tall fence in right center field. And I know that Little League does have tall fences in areas, I mean, how, and those are the Park Institutional District, same zoning as this, right?
Correct.
So why, is it because those were, well, the softball field at Christ Park was, was that fence put up recently, or is that a moldy fence?
I can't answer, I'm fairly dubious, I would just have to make assumption that was either put in with variance, or it was.
Okay.
Put in for the code.
All right, I'm not aware of the, the answer to that. I just know that there are tall fences on other baseball, softball fields in the city, for the same reasons. Okay, thanks. Question, any other questions?
I did mention the question of defining whether or not this is truly a fence when with the intent, here it is, the safety barrier falls, made of nylon, of course, the poles are made of metal, but the fence, says the structure is composed of wood, iron, steel, basery, stone, or other material. But the other material is probably something related to that, some sort of similar type of product. This is the nylon mesh material. And regardless of whether we treat this as a fence or not, I mean, and I think this is a compelling public interest of, they're concerned of, there's constant traffic on 43 Market Avenue and a stray ball comes through and impacts the windshield. Be lucky if that's the only part of the accident that would occur. I mean, it's a compelling issue for public safety, the amount of traffic and the, as you said, the issue of whether or not that's truly a fence and that's.
I think, I'm gonna just assume that this is a fence. Cause I think with the metal poles and it's secure or secures them than the definition. Partially, partially secure. So I think you could, I think, I personally was gonna assume that it will work with a fence here. Cause I did wonder about that. I've seen these all over the place. I was worried, is this even a fence with the materials picked up? Anything else? Any, any questions?
I have no. I have no problem. Yes, it's not a rustle maker. They're gonna have to rustle them.
It's not, I don't think it's contemplated by the definition, but I, I see somebody, the argument is it is faulty with the definition.
It's part of this is, as well, that something that they, one of the factors is this is their own doing. And, uh, this is why the Market Avenue, including the right turning lane for the issues that if you've tried to go down East Maple recently, because they don't have the lights that sing just yet. And have it wider yet just to make it more friendly for the motorists passing through there. So they ended up, as a result of this street widening, wherever those conveniences, they travel on Route 43, they lost, uh, they lost trees, that's not.
Yes, that was Walsh property then, correct, taken by them and remained, correct, so.
Yeah, the trees had to come down based upon the new sidewalk. The sidewalk was gonna be put in intentionally to get up the trees.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Uh, anybody else that can speak regarding this application? Okay, with that, uh, my thought is that this is the reason we have, uh, the board is only appeals. This, this, uh, request makes total sense based on all the circumstances. There is a substantial public safety, uh, factor here. It's a very unique situation with the wide market, uh, field was there before and it's gonna take some time for some trees to grow. I also think, I also like, I like this netting better than channeled fencing. Uh, I just think it's more visually attractive and it can be taken down a lot easier, hopefully. Hopefully that is an option to enjoy in, uh, in the winter time. So, uh, based on, can I leave, uh, you know, there's, you know, the criteria. When I look at all the criteria, 1179, 1110, C1, I believe that most are, all of them speak in favor of range of variance. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Uh, anybody have any other thoughts? How to make a motion?
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
I'll sign it.
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
I'll sign it.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Go ahead and roll, please.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. McHulston?
Yes.
Mr. Zalder?
Yes. variance is granted, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business, uh, for the board? If not, we'll adjourn to motion to adjourn. I said, uh, do a voice for all those in favor. Well, we can be deep thought. Thank you.